Fast Test. Fast Test.
It's better than whatever the yeah, whatever the bureau is.
It was they've done it. Yeah, like it's amazing. So I know.
I know. I would give it for the how do you show them? Like I need to actually ask her like, did they ship?
Yeah.
Seriously, like wow, that's my my niece's husband drinks beer. That would be the perfect gift to send, you know, like your
Thank you.
Army A two order at six thirty eight. Gender reviews. Anyone like to change your add today again? Good. If not, I'll address the board, the rules.
Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Yay.
Holly has some rations stomach. We picked tonight to like go all out.
Enter your participant ID followed by pounds. Otherwise, self press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password followed by pounds.
For us to be fine.
That's gonna say.
You have not entered any numbers.
Linda, can you hear us?
You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted.
I think I can hear you now. I just can't see you.
Oh, well, that's okay.
I'm also trying to call in by telephone.
Cause then we just try to listen. So we've been troubleshooting, or not we, Jan has been troubleshooting, the royal we has been troubleshooting.
And what's going on mine?
Except for.
Thank you so much, everyone.
All right. Linda, do you have comments other than you couldn't hear things?
No, I'm good to go.
Okay. If it's not working again or cuts out, put your hand back up and we will revisit.
Okay, but last meeting I had my hand up the whole time and you never called on me.
Sorry, we'll do a better job.
Another way. And now it's back.
All right. Um, all right. Thank you, Mark, for the update. I just made a connection to you. I think we are actually natives.
We are natives.
You have my daughter. Yes, she's very happy to have that passed on. Okay. Sorry, I'm going back here. Okay. All right. Business prior discussion. Here we go onto Tony for our facilities report.
How are you?
Hi, Tony.
So I am going to, like, for those who don't know me, I'm the facilities director for the SAU seventy. Thanks for inviting me tonight. I know. Pre said, give you a little update in August, but I'll. Stay on that a little bit. So. You know, they got, we had a healthy building improvement budget last year, so we were able to get some things accomplished. I gave you all a little cheat sheet up there, but the first thing is these are annual expenses for inspections. The best theory systems, fire systems, handicap doors, our elevator, kitchen exhaust, right? Those are all things that not in the building improvement, but they're in the. Just wanted to let you all know that those were all completed and everything's in fairly good shape. And boilers, we all, we have new boilers. As you all might know, we will be servicing those in Scott here. In fall, and hoping everything will, uh, will smoothly. And back to the building improvements, right? We, one of the major things, the $10,000 or more items, which. I really appreciate. We're able to tear some of the roof. We'll be getting cabinet offices this year. We. We are reco for the basketball court out in the front. And then one thing that should be ongoing is we read that we were based in asbestos. And cleanups in the classrooms. When we took out that asbestos, it was a really nice improvements for the building. Good bunch of other things. We installed a little more 3K fence out here in the front playground. This new septic system is working well. We're gonna have to kind of leave a lot of money on that because. Put a bunch of funds into that a few years ago. But I didn't have any breakouts on the green this past winter, so that was improvement. So yeah, my. My opinion of facility is that we're, we're still somewhere between. Good, fair and poor. If we, I know you all are familiar with some of the assessments we've had over the last few years. Where that's how they kind of grade things. Good, fair, poor, excellent. So we have some new stuff, like I said, so that's all good or excellent condition. We have some components, systems that are significant in age, so those are in the core. Oh, and then we have a lot of. Components that are showing signs of wear and use, but still useful. I think. I haven't been able to speak with the consorbanier or assistant Brad, but I think things are going well. For part this year, we've been in school twenty four days. And it's been a cool fall, so we haven't had many issues with the second floor or heating. Such items like that, so it's all good on the number part. But I don't know, I'm just the basic annual stuff. Do you have any thoughts or questions for me and the facility? So that really isn't, I mean. Facility is functioning is again, where. We have to do with what we have.
So, yeah, just to make sure we're connecting kind of with you, despite, you know, two, but as you might, I may have not paid attention to the budget guidelines that we have, that the two items in there that we talked about with Teresa, as far as. Over this course of this fall, as the budget's coming together, and this is. One is just to work with you and confirm, and obviously Teresa, that, you know, we have the same amount in the. Can we just call it building improvement budget, so we have an annual expense budget, and last year is a hundred and four thousand, and we've kept the same amount this year.
Okay.
But obviously. You know, we want feedback as far as, is that enough, too much? Not enough, right, for kind of some of the projects, and then the other part that we've kind of added in as far as. Items that we want to make sure we're having a dialogue with as we build the budget.
Right.
Is we specifically mentioned a roof, but I'll call it kind of. You know, it'd be nice to get a sense of kind of capital needs, like something, what's coming down the pipe big and when, we keep talking about the roof, you just mentioned the roof, this kind of, we're fixing it to do repairs.
Right.
With leftover budget, but I've also heard. Something we need to really do the roof, and then, of course, we're also working with, which. Robin sent out that huge. Capital improvement plan, which I think is kind of a future thing, right, that's not really gonna impact this budget season, so.
I am, well, I'm somewhat aware of. Our budget season and how we handle the budget, and that will be nine years, right? It's gonna be higher than lower, and. Around a hundred thousand dollars seems to work for getting some things done, right? And it's not gonna accomplish some of the things that are on our assessment list. But I did highlight a few that are high on the list, which is asbestos abatement and. Roots, right? So those, those are pretty important items. But when we want to, I'll segue right into the CIP, which. Again, I didn't come here meeting in August, but I did go to the Dresden meeting, so you're all saw it there. We hired an outfit there to work on this with us a little bit, and we. Fully engaged with them to. Produce a CIP, but they're still engaged with us, and they are expecting to report in in November. So in August. I didn't think there was, you know, a real push to have a CIP or answers to a CIP until November. And now we moved that timeline up a little, so we have engaged with principals, Teresa and I, and mother directors. And we're working on that, we actually have another meeting, a follow-up meeting on Monday, right? And. And by November, we will have. All of our opinions on what are the priorities for the facilities. And some of those, yeah, a lot of that would be based off assessment, and then I do believe principals will be adding. Things that pertain to curriculum, that they need, right? With, you know, whether that's renovating a first part of the facility, adding our, whatever that is. So. Yeah, so I don't know, and that was my thought when, when you. Expedated CIP list. Are we gonna try to borrow money this year, or plan to do some of that bigger stuff, or are we just gonna? You know, put stuff in our building improvement line and just bug away?
At this point, we, at least the budget we've got going right now, it's gonna be giving a building improvement budget, and making sure that that's. Sufficient, or if we need to add more, what else would that, but then I think, and then, you know, we, and maybe, you know, this obviously in parts, our next budget meetings. I can't really speak to the capital improvement, I, my understanding, or our understanding is that there's a committee now, right, it's been formed, and it's probably gonna be some bigger decisions and bigger planning. Unless there's something. We're gonna kind of speak and put it aboard here, but unless there's something that's like. You know. Atrophic, that's really impending, that we need to go out with a bond, but I think that, we all.
Do not want to ask. Marrying cross, that is the case. I do believe we have the plan, correct, I'm just telling. And then, yeah, then it would just be desire, or do we want to try to get that into the, into March or?
So there's a really budget guideline pieces for you, at least, was just the, again, that building improvement, the annual kind of, we got up there for the annual spend. And then if there's any big capital needs that are, that you really need to be aware of, or not. Or if it's just gonna be part of the, the kind of, right now, the more formally organized capital improvement plan with the capital improvement committee, and that. We've got the big spreadsheet for the problems.
I can just head to that, and based on the last, the strategic planning meeting that we're at, and I'm not sure if. You created this spreadsheet or who, but, but there's a tab for each of the schools, so we've asked them to go and actually plug in. Now to review the spreadsheets and everything else, and to go in there and plug in what their projection is, or their interpretation of their needs and. Wants for the school and stuff like that, and so that gives us that point of view already from that. Standpoint, and then, of course, reviewing it ourselves from our point of view. And then on Monday's meeting is with the committee, and then we have individual school meetings, still, we want to still do one-on-one. For a little more nitty-gritty and stuff like that, so that was our plan.
And then, Johnny, so are there any safety things, asbestos, that makes everyone's hair go up in the back of their neck a little bit, but is that?
Asbestos is, is fine if it's not disturbed, right, but anytime we do some improvements to an area, like, the concern was this year. Improvements to the pre-plate classrooms.
Got it.
So we had to abate the asbestos in order to get those other improvements done. And we could continue on that path. For multiple years. I will use race school as an example, because we have been doing that at race school for at least five years now. We take out a little asbestos, reduce some improvements. And, you know, they help the facility. You can do it all at once, we can identify all this, just do it all at once, as far as, as we, as, if you all remember. Truitt Collins' comment about. Bumping projects together, if you're gonna borrow money.
Yeah.
There might be projects you wanna bump together. And you would all be like. Borrow the money all at once in their plan.
Well, I think at least to cut this short, then, I think from at least a budget committee standpoint, like, we need that guidance, I think, right, so a little bit like, you know. What, what these projects should be done, and again, it, you know, I think we're finally moving on with the capital growth plan, Kevin, so I think that. Is all good, and now it's a matter of, for this budget season, is there anything that we should be. Planning for or not, you don't need to answer it now, I think that you've got the internal budget meeting coming up in the middle of the month, and then. Our meeting, where we're gonna be, our next meeting is twenty-nine, you know, we used to change that, but it's gonna be towards the end of the month.
Sure.
Where we're gonna kind of review the. You know.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have our annual. Budget meetings by then, for kind of something. I mean, and it's, I find this tricky, because, right, we have three different schools, so. Trying to figure out how we all can look together.
Okay, any questions for Tony from the board? Sorry, kind of went with questions there, but is anybody else have questions?
You asked Mike.
Definitely, any questions?
No, no questions, I, I, I think just the point, there is, you know, as in, we all know, a lot of uncertainty in education finance piece, and the sports consolidation piece in Vermont. One aspect of that is how Vermont funds. Instruction projects, or I should probably say how Vermont did not fund construction projects, since board members may be aware. The recent issue in Woodstock, it attempts to get a local bond cast, or to be able to. Pay for needed building repairs. That school district reached out to the legislature asking for help, because what happens is, is that when you bond for this. Those, those payments, those finance payments end up getting added to your per people spending bowl. And you, and if you trip the threshold, then you get penalized for that, and so it's, it's a ridiculous system that we have in place right now. That A, the state doesn't provide any assistance in funding these local projects. So B, that puts it all on the backs of the local taxpayers, we're gonna be able to fund building improvements, and then C, on top of that, if it turns what they call too much, you get penalized for that. So I'm really hoping that some of the. Redistricting work that's gonna be going on when the legislative session starts up again. And some of this work on what are we, what is the state gonna do when it comes to capital, you know, improvements, or just. I wanna say improvements, just fixing our, our old. And dilapidated holdings that sorely need to be fixed, if, if the state's gonna finally step forward. Admit that this is a priority and actually do something about it, so local school districts aren't left with a burden. So that being said, I, I, I think we want to know what those things are, that need to be addressed. I guess I would caution my board colleagues that we may wanna. Hold off on engaging on any massive bonding work until this piece plays out, so that we know what's gonna happen. Whether or not the state's gonna step up and provide some assistance, they're gonna alleviate any of the potential, you know, burden that local districts would incur. And taking out bonds, at this stage, it's just all over the two best can't hide it. But, sorry.
Well, I think, you know, even after the budget season would go through, I think maybe something for the spring is once this capital premise committee's. Done some work, and, you know, I, the spreadsheet that Robin sends, nice, too, that kind of at least lays out kind of year one through five, and. Once that gets more fully baked, because obviously right now the numbers are, for the district are a little mind-boggling, and we, I think it's probably gonna be a matter of. Figure out what the real priorities are, but I think having US come to us and kind of have that timeframe laid out as far as. Here's the big stuff, this is kind of, but then obviously things. Can deal with the state issues and decide how long we can wait or not. All right. Tony for the help on that, see you tonight. All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is the reading of the policy, this is the second reading. Again, it's a, it's a. Behavior threat assessment, it's necessary for the Vermont schools by October first, which is today, so we're getting right in there, perfect timing. And as we talk about the last meeting, Sean has reviewed this as well, and. We've, everything's in line on that front, so any comments on this reading, this will be part of our consent doing that?
That.
It's good.
I have one, like, if I don't think it's. Material. On the third paragraph in the first line, marrying cross rules should have a positive yes instead of the way it is, but that's not material. I'm just an annual.
Good catch.
Okay. So I, I can send Ryan a quick note if you'd like to.
Yeah, I think we do.
Do I do it?
Sure.
Okay, our V S B A resolutions. See here, the resolutions are posted here. Annual meeting is October twenty-third. Do you have any discussion on any of these items? Daniel's gonna be our, for our last meeting, he's gonna be our representative that we're delegating to vote. And at this point, I guess the board. We would be recommending to Neil to vote according to. What's being recommended here in the green on the far right column.
Acceptant for clarification, so anywhere where it says take no position. The SBA board has offered no opinion as to whether, so I need direction from this body. As to how you all think I should vote on those ones that specifically say take no position.
I just wouldn't vote.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I will offer this, so the items that you said listed for take no position. You'll find that most of them have sort of a similar. Focus.
Yeah.
That was, it, it sort of came out of the last legislative session. Where several school districts. There was a lot of anxiety, there continues to be a lot of anxiety around what was H four fifty-four, which is now Act seventy-three. Which was the school consolidation bill that was passed and signed by the governor. There were a lot of school districts that were concerned during the legislative session that the SBA wasn't accurately reflecting. Their concerns and their position relative to the bill as it was being developed. And so they, in turn, then submitted resolutions for. The V S B A annual meeting, where membership will actually decide then what the, you know, what the V S B A's resolution is going to be on this matter. I will say it is, and this is just. Purely my point of view, having served on the SBA board for quite some time. And having been the president of that organization for four years, it is challenging to balance. The, the positions of. An entire state of school boards, right? Not everybody is coming to the table in lockstep and have a view. You know, whatever piece of legislation being considered in the state house at the time. And so it's always this push-pull of trying to make sure that we're. A, adhering to the resolutions that we already have in place in the organization, and B, that we're also then. Listening to our membership and our constituents and, and trying to make sure that we're representing adequately. In the statehouse, the V S B A board's decision to take no position on these items reflects that difficulty from the last session. And so that's, you know, why the board has recommended. Take no position, but we will be voting on each of these individually, and so some guidance from. From this body as to how you would like me to vote on these, would be greatly appreciated.
All right, well, with that being said, then maybe we just take them, item by item. So why don't we just go with, with resolution number one, it passes a continuing resolution, but again, we'll start with these, I don't. Do we agree that the ocean? Passed, it's still a board recommendation on that one?
Yep.
Okay. Number two, this was the local control of schools and buildings. And read it. It's a lot, it seems like. They basically. Sorry, just kidding, I'm sorry, what I, what, what I will add, this, there's, it was clear, so the, the task force on school district and so, redistricting. Met yesterday, and then I also was part of a meeting yesterday evening, in terms of the co-chairs of that task force. That was for the V S B A regional meetings. Where board members got to ask questions, it is pretty clear to me that anxiety is running really, really high around this org. And. School boards and school board members all across the state. I think are very anxious as to what's gonna happen to my local district, to my town, to my school. And what we're hearing quite frequently is. We're unique. We do things special here, this is the heart of my community, nothing should change. And I hear that mantra over and over and over again. They may be right, I find it. Interesting that we have so many unique school districts in our state, I thought we were all kind of doing something similar here and educating our kids, but. I don't care, really, that may not be the case. I personally find. These resolutions. Not in the best interest of the SBA and not in the best interest of membership. But I will leave it at that before I say. Well, I, I am not trying to influence the vote of this, this body here, as to how you would like me to vote, and I will follow whatever you direct me to do. Maybe we should have three twenty of them?
No, 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 that's fine, I just wanted to give a little bit more context around what you're reading there.
Okay, because that's where I go, at the point two was, it seems like it makes sense, but then it also kind of flies in the face of trying to get anything done. Right, because if the decision, I mean, again, reading this one. That basically is saying, if you make a decision, then basically you need to go back and study it all again, which I thought was kind of what the redistricting task force and the task force were doing. It was completing the studies and making a decision, but you're not bringing it back and in for yet another. Which I think is kind of what you're getting at, right, that you need to move forward with this. But in a sense, you don't necessarily want one person. Will be Department of Education is making a decision, and having everyone attempted. Not, right, invested, right?
Yes, I mean, it's the, it is the challenge of. Yes, I mean, it's the, it is the challenge of um. How do you deal with a group of folks where not everybody's on the same page? And and if you're the organization that's tasked with. Um, representing all of those people, how do you act or represent that?
Okay, so do you have any discussion on number two? For now, why don't we assume that based on Neil's comment that, you know, our position will be to. Vote no on meetings unless. Unless there's a reason, unless we have this discussion to vote yes.
Can I, I mean, before the. I I'm struggling with the the ones down below. Um, like starting with, I think it's, I gotta go up to the top, but like eight through. Yeah, eight through eleven. They sort of all say the same thing, which I mean, which I'm struggling to see kind of what the difference is. I mean, they're all coming at it from a different perspective. But the final paragraph is basically. We want local control and and please don't do anything that would take away local control. And I guess I'm just kind of. I think we're all for local control and consult like consolidation takes away, like there's no way to. To have the to consolidate and also keep local, like it it's gonna be very difficult to do both. And so I just. I'm struggling with. With what to say about any of these, to be honest, and also um. What difference does this make? Because I feel like this meeting happens after the last task force meeting, correct? Isn't the last task force meeting October tenth? For the for the consolidation.
What difference does this make? When these are passed as resolutions, then they become. Um, the guiding principles by which V S B A then engages on this particular topic. Whether it's uh, you know, now or.
Yeah, no, I understand that part of it, but I guess I'm, uh, my question is the timing of it, because our meeting is on the twenty third and I. Thought the last meeting of the consolidation task force was the tenth. So this feels like these votes happen too late to influence what the commission would do, or is that wrong? I mean, it doesn't, it's not too late to influence the legislative session, but.
All the task force is gonna do is make a recommendation to the legislature and the legislature is gonna pick that ball up then and they're gonna go to town with it.
Okay, so this sort of has nothing to do with the task force. Because they'll be done.
No, this has everything to do with the V S B A and how the V S B A is going to weigh in on this particular topic.
In the legislative session.
Whether that's in the legislative forum, whether that's in another task force that gets spun up somewhere. This just becomes one of our, one of the things I refer to and say, when somebody asks us, V S B A, what is your position on?
This is gonna be it.
Uh, school consolidation, local control, the closing of schools, we will refer to this resolution. If it passes and say, this is our.
Okay, so then back to my first point is I I I'm having, I'm struggling with seeing. They all land in the same place, so.
Well, kind of actually like. It seems to me like, you know, that, and again, maybe I'm. Seems to me that two and eight. Kind of take the position of. You know, this has to be done in a way that's. Interacting with the local, you know, making sure that people still have some local control. And it seems like nine, ten and eleven. Are a little bit more strong as far as just saying they will oppose any, it's an all consolidation. So I guess if I were to read these myself, I would almost say I would support number two and eight and not support nine, ten and eleven. Because it seems to me that like if you're reading nine, ten, eleven, they're basically saying. Yeah, they were, you know, for example, uh, sorry, my screen's smaller than my big screen. But number nine, for example, is the first one that. The V S K vigorously opposed any legislation that ceased to force the consolidation of school districts to make easier to force the closure of small schools or oppose middle class classes. I think at least from our perspective is is that schools do need to consolidate to some point, right? There has to be, this is gonna work.
Yeah, yes, I, if I made a chairman, I would have one question for Neil and then potentially a comment. Yeah, when when script comes together to vote. Right, I'm willing to support these resolutions. Is the vote of the normal school district? Like, would a vote in either direction harm us? In the larger political conversation that must occur about the future of Vermont's health uh education system?
Potential. The way that, the way that the V S B A uses these resolutions for guidance, um, is. Um, to figure out, you know, what is, how are we going to engage, especially in the legislative process? And these are the resolutions that we have. What we have found in the past. Is that when resolutions um. Say, for example, caused the V S B A to vigorously um oppose anything. That's pretty black and white. And so what happens is that we would vigorously oppose anything and then we're done. And what we've found is that the legislative process isn't always linear that way. It kind of goes up and down, as you well know. And we sometimes can get handstrong by these resolutions that force us to act or behave or advocate in a certain way. And doesn't leave us that room to monitor bills as they go through the legislative process and react.
I a hundred percent agree. Um, I feel like we're trying to figure out how we're gonna play our hand of cards and the dealer is not even in the voting. I mean, for me, if I were instructing someone how to vote, I'd say. Uh, pretty easy to be for universal school meals, pretty easy to be against vaping. Everything else, we used to take a vote contrary to the interests of the interstate school district. That's how I instruct the delegate to vote.
Unfortunately, if I was Neil getting that direction, I would not know where to vote.
Vote yes on one end.
I would say, uh, Neil can work with those guidelines as long as the board is willing to uh. Uh, allow that.
So do you feel with that? I mean, again, do you want to have us to?
You know, what I don't want to have happen is that you find out the way that Neil voted or something.
That's what I don't want to have happen.
Well, I think, I think from my perspective as the chair, I think we all place enormous trust in in your guidance, Neil, I think. I guess what I'm asking is at least for, you're basically looking at the, at the ones that say take no position, which is, like I said, it's basically two, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Two, eight, nine, ten and eleven, right? And again, if you want to, if we did want to talk about these nine, ten and eleven, that the recommendation is, I think it's verbatim, isn't it? I mean, I didn't actually.
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's the same.
Instruction to the V S B A is identical.
Yeah, that's what, that's my point. It's like it, it, yeah.
Nine, ten and eleven, again, we could probably, if we wanted to, but we could also just leave it to you, but I think. Nine, ten and eleven, the beat resolved language is literally verbatim in. So it's really two, it's really maybe putting those into the bucket. I think to your point, at least I'll just, I mean, I'll just state my opinion if you want to split your own way. Those seem pretty. Black and white, that if if the V S B A is gonna do that, then we basically are gonna be back, there's gonna be no progress to be at the state as far as any sort with talk about. Consolidation or changing our system, which seems to be. Neil's leaving at that and then. You know, two, two and eight seem a little bit more. Vague, at least from my perspective, I'd be more supportive of those resolutions, cuz it does seem like. You know, if these can task force aren't aren't taking into consideration some semblance of local control and just giving it all up to the state, that's. That's just my opinion. Seems nine, nine, ten and eleven seem pretty. Pretty punitive, if I just think that this is a term for. We start from the V S B A to just shut down whatever task force says. If they decide there is some consolidation that should happen. Uh, more board discussion, do you feel, so do you feel like you're okay then, or do you want us to go through?
Uh, I mean, if you wanna, I I can um work under Michael's suggested parameters if the board is so inclined to approve that.
Anybody on the board feel very strongly about any of these other ones then, or do we think that's? How to support that?
Okay, we're gonna want Michael to make a motion when we get into the business for referring actions. They will have my motion ready to go.
So Michael, you can make that motion. We can. Make sure it got there right here. So maybe we will pull that out then, right? Affirm the V S B A resolutions as a separate. Item out of the consent agenda. That sound okay? Okay. All right, any other discussion on that? No, good. All right, moving on to our next item, the uh, how do you say this? It's the Vermont cap, the V. What's that? Vermont cap testing update? So this is our. Usually happens at during the fall, so Greg, are you?
Michael, that? Yes, so I have the presentation and you go here if you want to go along. But I'll introduce myself. My name is Greg Bagnato. I'm the associate principal and usually I do the testing organization. But when I heard what I was gonna do is um data review. That's only partially Vermont cap, so you might have to bear with me to hear some other things too, if you don't mind. I think it's important to look at. All the stuff we're looking at and how our kids are achieving and growing. So we do a lot here. So I'll try to be kind of quick though, because it's um. There's a lot. The idea of presenting data to a school board is great because, but it's like, really what we're trying to do is a school the last few years especially. Um, really incorporating data into our decision. So. Takes a little bit here. Um. But I'll try to go through through it quickly. Um, this is part of our strategic plan. Um, it's not about data, but it's about, you know, providing instruction, co and extracurricular programs, professional development, other forms of support. Um, so we're really looking at all types of data to go ahead and. Um, accomplish this goal. I think it's important to describe to you these three things. I did this at our back to school night for parents and Sean and I presented to parents. And so whenever we talk about universal with tier one, that means every student in the school gets it, which is. Every single student that walks through the doors. If some kids need a little bit more, they're in that targeted range and there's a few kids that might need some intensive. When I talk about supports. It could be academic, it could also be social emotional, could be behavioral, and all those things that we look at. Um, but we do have particular systems for those supports and these show the percent, percent of our students. Um, in those different support systems, there's some things that are not in here cuz we don't have the data. But for example, our I E Ps are around twelve percent. That far, the column on the far right um shows the kids that are in supports. In the state of Vermont for I E Ps, so Vermont's best state specialized is the same thing as I E Ps. It's just the whole state versus just us. Um, there's our percent of kids on five oh fours, which is like three point something percent. And I'll talk about the different things. And then E S O L is what New Hampshire calls E L L, but it's the same thing. Students are. Uh. Learning English language learns. The other is our percents. The significant thing about this is our E L L numbers have. Kind of grown quite a lot in the last three years, maybe doubled. Um, so. That's something interesting and I think our our I E Ps have gone down a little bit. I. Can't say that necessarily, that's what I would know they're talking about right now. You guys can ask questions at any time.
And I just make sure I haven't had that bit of reading this beforehand. Um, so the three. Data points on the left are not apples to apples, but the fourth data point on the right, they're just a comparison of I E Ps.
Yeah, the I E P bar graph is apple to apple with the Vermont special end. But the other two are just kids in different territories. And the fourth, the fourth support program we have at school, that's a formal system, it's called education support team. So we do not have numbers for that. Kids don't qualify. We look at data to determine what their needs are. Um, these are the three things that we have in our school. Um, I won't read it all, but basically the education support team is for any kid. That maybe has some behavior referrals that they've had several of, and we start coming with a plan for them or. They're behind in their. Um, base ten counting, and then we have data to show that. So anytime that teachers. Um, or anybody, but typically great little teams we meet every week have concerns about students, we can bring them up here. And we usually have data, we should have data to back it up. And then we make a plan and we have, we identify what the day is gonna be before we. You know, at the next meeting, when I come back and see if it's, it's working. The five oh four, super quick, is a civil rights law to make sure people have access to the education program. And so that's usually accommodations. And then I E P is, and it, and this is where some. People, um, like we, we're talking about this a lot cuz we want people to understand it's an individual education plan. They don't, the kids in this area may get. The universal instruction, but they also need a totally different way of like getting the uh information presented and learning it. So a good example of that could be like with reading, maybe some way of, you know. Some specific inability that they may need a specific program to learn reading better. One of our school goals is this, which is basically making our E S T team more effective. There's uh guidance from the state that every school needs an E S T team, but how your school does it is very different. So ours looks very different than where I was before. Um, like it a lot. But basically really want insurance to receive timely data-driven interventions. That's really important. So what we do at school, such at this time of year. Uh, is we look at a bunch of different data and this isn't only what we do. The most important thing is probably what teachers are experiencing in the classroom. However, it's really nice to have a national norm screener like DIBELS and I Ready. To know that is, is an outside test that's nationally normed and we can kind of see how our students are doing. So. We use I Ready. I think I talked enough about that in the past. Um. DIBELS is, is a foundational literacy skills screener. It's. The one that's approved by the state of Vermont that we have to do K through three now, and we have to inform parents about how their students did. Um, to pick up reading specific learning differences for them. It doesn't show. A specific learning difference, but it just kind of might put kids on like that flag.
The question is, when did um Marion Cross start doing these things?
Well, I Ready is like our fourth year probably. DIBELS, we've been doing for three years, but for K through three starting last year.
So long after some of us who had children in the district have kids in it.
We, yeah, we might have something called Track My Progress, but it wasn't like with fidelity.
It wasn't like this, yeah. I'm, I'm glad to see this.
And then for math, we don't have like an equivalent of DIBELS, but we do do a universal screener, screener for number sense. Which is pretty. It's a pretty straightforward screener. DIBELS is, can be as well. They don't take a lot of time, but they are. Like one on one with the teachers, so it does take resources. Um, and you can see that we did give that.
Uh, we, and I don't want us to fall down the rabbit hole here. Um, over the last year, once or twice, we heard from faculty members about. Reading wars and phonics-based education versus full language acquisition method. Um, and and some, some pain and frustration with how that's worked or not worked for students. Is DIBELS, I know it's mandatory, but is it on either side of that or is it agnostic? I'm just. Really fascinated by that last year and just wanted to ask the question.
We have people in the L, you know, like community that respond to that. Do you want to have? I just think it's, it's pretty much agnostic, but it is really on the phonics part. So it's more, there's a science of reading. So the foundational stuff that young kids need uh do in everyday reading. And same with the number sense for math. So yeah, we just, I can see that we do it for all new students and that includes kindergarten students and then any other kids that identifies through I Ready or. We see classwork and we want to get a little bit more information. Uh, there are other things too, student work is one and we do have a big goal with that as a staff. I'm really psyched about it this year. Um, I think most folks are, and of course, um, we have more math and reading type, like dig deep into particular stuff that we can do on a case by case basis. Um, this is our, this is our second out of three goals. We're not going to talk about the, the sort of practice goal, but it's based on how community building. So this one is every month, um, grade level teams are looking at student work. And we have a protocol that they're going through. Um, and then facilitators that are seven different people in each school, um, each for each grade, including specials teachers. They're all in one group and we're looking at student work and they're like making next steps. Um, we're, we're identifying next steps to better teach that concept. So this is really small for you to see, but this is an example from our last one. Um, this group, this grade level looked at a cooldown from their unit one lesson nine. So they looked at all that student work. They identified how many kids were proficient in that, um, standard, which was at the very top. Represent solve problems involving, uh, multiplication and division. So we can identify some are almost and some are not yet proficient. And then below there, uh, I can't scroll down the slide. It basically has, have action steps for that teacher's name who's blacked out. Um, and if you're proficient, what can you do? If you're almost proficient, what do we do? Not yet proficient, what do we do? And our classes are set up where we can do that all kids. So that's, this is a tier one intervention, not, uh, their special. So it's important, before I get into the numbers, that you just see that we're doing lots of different things to try to identify kids and then figure out what their needs are. Um, here's our D cap and I Ready achievement. Um, I spent a lot of time this summer trying to see if they are aligned. And at first glance, it looks like a little. Um, but in, so our I Ready at the end of the, the whole school, at the end of the year in math, we had eighty four percent of our kids on grade level. But that means early, mid and late grade level. So if you teach at fourth grader, it's, that includes all kids on early fourths, even at the end of the year. And that's what I Ready tells us is on grade level. Uh, but when looking at data and comparing to the D cap, we really need kids at middle or late to be, to get proficient in D cap. Especially for math. In the LA, it seems like they can be early and still make proficient in D cap. So that's from my small Marion Cross School sample size. Um, but you can see that, so we're pretty darn proficient school wide. Of course, we want to do all the things that we just talked about to improve. Um, these are our performances for last year. And if you want to know, level four is above proficient. Again, exceeding proficiency, I can't remember what they say, level four, level three is proficient. Level two is approaching, level one is below. Um, I don't really have, I don't really have a lot to say about all these. Um, our math is lower this past recap than it was the year before. And our E L A is little, maybe about percentage, about the same, I think it's percentage point higher. Um, you can see there's a couple of grades up there that are a little bit lower. And we, I hate showing grades because then we think about those grades, but really it's, these kids are learning in a number sense in kindergarten and so, you know, let's say cohort that we're all working together. So we've identified that, we've talked about that and, um, we're working to try and improve that.
Greg, when you see a grade that is lower, are there things that we're doing to like, um, the business you call like a tiger team where you like throw something at it to try to like really like address it? So I don't know what you'd call it here, but like, could you do special things to try to say, hey, this grade really seems off compared to others? Or how do you handle that?
Well, I, I think for this one, this is not like necessarily a big surprise because we're doing all those things earlier. And we know that there's certain groups of kids that have a lower, had a lot of E S T O L intervention throughout the year. Um, and you know, sometimes I think about the Vermont cap in third grade, honestly, and those kids have never sat through a computerized like two, not two hours necessarily, but definitely an hour plus. And I think that's pretty challenging for them. I think you see third grade sometimes lower, but, um, yeah, we definitely have looked at all this, we looked at individual kids, the teachers that are super motivated by seeing the kids and how they did. Uh, and now we've identified them for this year, so of that. But fourth in the year, you see that fourth grade and sixth grade sport a lot for that cohort.
And I guess my question then on that fifth grade numbers, that's the current sixth graders.
Yeah.
And they leave here at the end of the year, but they stay in our school system for the next six or so years. Um, so I mean, there is striking on the bad side. Like are there conversations, like let's say that that doesn't improve in sixth grade or there are conversations, do the R M S about, hey, you, you gotta like figure out how we gotta work together with that group, like kind of tag it up on Gina's question.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we really look at individual kids. We talk about these are the kids that are going to need that particular area of support at R M S. Um, yeah, I really want to concentrate too, like if you look at the I Ready, which is also a national norm test. Might even be better than D cap, honestly, you know, I don't know. I look at some, I don't really think that, but this is one data point, Vermont cap showing something else. Class performance may show something different. So that's why I didn't want to just show E cap results and have us help with that. But if there is a theme, which there are sometimes in the grade level, I'll get, I was like, if there's a theme of like cohort of kids, yes, we were talking about that theme, what we did, they go somewhere along the way.
Just a follow up, sorry on the, the R M, that R M S question. Is it trending the same way at the Ray School? Like, uh, you know, are this year's, well, I guess they would now be at R M S, but are this year's sixth graders also struggling compared to other grades in math or is this, do we know?
It was, last year was an interesting.
Yeah.
It's hard to compare.
Okay. Okay.
We had a change of teaching staff.
Yeah.
Here that impacted overall some.
Yeah.
Happening, so that was not a great.
Okay.
Comparison to be able to draw.
Cause I just think it's sometimes helpful if both sides of the river are having similar problems, then it makes it easier for the R M S teachers to deal with it. Like I know sometimes, um, reputations of classes behavior wise match on those sides of the river. So the R M S teachers are prepared for like a higher energy level for this particular group of seventh graders. Um, but we do talk about that when students go into R M S from both schools. We look at what has happened in terms of the state testing scores and some of these other scores like I Ready and so. Staff are aware of that.
And what's, what's also kind of cool, this is, uh, uh, this race goes starting I Ready, so we'd love to.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Talk together and look at that.
Especially now since we're also aligned around Illustrator map. And some of our collaborative Wednesday times this year, we'll be focusing on what's happening with the program, the next steps.
If I'm doing the math right in my head, I just want to make sure I'm getting this two percent is roughly one kid. Oh, I haven't done that math in my head. That probably is since it's about forty five, fifty.
Yeah.
Like, you know.
And this includes kids on plans, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so if you happen to have a few.
Right, a cohort with a lot of kids on plan.
Just like it's going to change the data.
Yeah.
Yeah. While assuming they're, they're on a plan and not performing.
Right.
Yeah, so we've moved four kids from, from level ones to level two or level two to level three. You've seen huge difference in that percentage. All right, um, here's, I like, sometimes I like to talk about growth more than final state testing. So are I Ready, because we do it three times through the year, we can look at the growth. And what this is showing basically is that mid and above grade level numbers from last year to this year. I like to look at the overall, so if we look at, we had in math supposedly, uh, eighty four percent proficient in grade level. And the year before was eighty three percent. Um, so about the same. And then reading also, and then if you take, when the kid takes their test, their first diagnostic in September, it'll kind of predict depending on where they started, where they can end. And you want to get every kid to have a hundred percent growth throughout the year. So that purple line is the average of all the kids' growth from last year, uh, from two years ago to last year. So it's nice to see growth. Um, and a lot of this has to do with, you know, these things, this I Ready test takes. Like a lot of grades are doing twenty minutes a day and then we take it several days to do it. We just do it during the like math in the meantime. So getting accurate information is, is essential for us. Some doesn't work well, um, to, for kids, so. Um, so that's our already growth. Um, and this is one thing, I think, there's another thing just to look at. This would be growth, this is DIBELS, so it's like a kindergarten. B O Y is beginning of the year, middle and end of the year. Now the problem with DIBELS is that, that, the ceiling or I guess the benchmark changes throughout the year. So kids are expected to know more at the end of the year than at the beginning or I Ready, it's always the same. But you do want to see, so even with that, like in kindergarten, you can see the amount of kids in green and blue goes up a lot, even though it's gotten harder. It's drawn up a lot and that's really what we want to see with our, especially with our youngest learners. We want to see that everywhere. Interesting in grade one how it fluctuated.
Yeah.
Um, but really kindergarten is such an important year to start off and have kids maybe in the kindergarten doing pretty well. Uh, but most of it shows that our kids are, are doing pretty well and it matches up a lot with some of the other proficiency numbers we have. If you look at third grade, seven, eighty one percent of kids are proficient in DIBELS, which is only like the phonics and the foundational reading skills, but not like comprehension. So it's a test of them. Um, so we are doing a lot and we don't really, my next steps are, we really, our next steps usually are a lot of things. And now it's like we are really just working those E S Ts, which is student support and looking at, looking at student work monthly. Cause they'll have those immediate impacts. That, we did, for me, and I'm happy to take any questions. I'm sure Sean will be happy to take any questions too, Becky and Jillian have as much with the testing and all the data, but.
I will say that I think sometimes reading is higher because kids do it at home and they don't do math at home. If they spend time reading on their own, and so they continue to grow outside of the school context. And math is something that they don't have a practice of, I'm going to do this in my free time.
And when we have these data discussions, we then take the ones from June and meet with the next years. The teachers that have that cohort this year. And so many of those discussions said like, how can we make math work at home fun? Like what's the games they can play over and over that they like as a reward? It's like, why, I hope my parents remember I assist me. True. All right. Thank you very much.
Robert?
I just want to commend Marion Cross because when I came here five years ago, not at least he's swarmed place and those have been built upon over time. And so I've just seen such incredible progress and growth in this area. And so I'm just really proud of all the work that they've done to take a look at all of these data points that they now have and sit in on E S T meetings when, you know, you're really getting to the heart of what is happening with individual children and really trying to address those needs behaviorally and academically. I mean, it shows in the data, so I think they've just done an incredible job.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great, all of you.
Good. And Michael, on slide four there, you had the percentages to support systems, Greg, you mentioned quite an increase.
I'm sorry.
It was the graph.
I don't know what slide this is.
There's the blue graph. You did, you just said that that was, it's quite a, so I E P and five oh fours are, are here, right? And then the E S O L is just for comparison for New Hampshire.
No, E L L is here, sorry, it was labeled B S O L because Rhett gave me the data and he was reporting from New Hampshire.
Okay. But then you mentioned that this is, but then the Vermont special ed, that's just the state of Vermont?
Yeah, so the state of Vermont and you take all the kids, about eighteen percent of them have I E Ps. So that's Vermont State Special Ed.
Okay. And then as far as these bars, if you're looking at these bars from the prior year, I mean, is there, they, I think you mentioned it, maybe.
I think the I E Ps have gone down a little bit. I vote, I have to get back to you.
He said that English language, I got that, but.
E L L definitely, I've seen that. That's probably doubled in three years. I mean, it's not that much, but when you have like two kids.
Correct. Okay, but the I E Ps and the five oh fours haven't got, it's kind of steady.
Five oh fours have been very steady.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other comments or questions?
It's awesome.
Thank you. I wish we had it.
Yes, I'm just presenting, like I just, I just like looking at data. It's all the stuff and Sean.
Okay, great, thank you, Greg. I'm sorry.
Such a bad night.
All right, so we got the depth and then my.
George.
All right, I'm back in, we just, we'll take this sign now. Okay. That was just here. All right, yes, North, what are your guidelines? Again, um, as we talked about the last meeting, we did include the red line. Neil had made some remarks just because I admit I got it in at the last minute. Um, and, and not given Neil a chance to review it yet. So Neil did provide some red line, which can see there in the, um, in the red line version. And then we have the, the V F is the version file, which we will be approving tonight. So if that makes it easy for everybody to see.
And I would just say, I just noticed one typo. It's actually in the, in the bold sentence in that first page, which is the one that's important. Um, it's just the dates are wrong. So it's recommend compares to the twenty five, twenty six.
Not twenty four, twenty five.
That's how it should read. It reads twenty four, twenty five budget, that's wrong. Should be the twenty five, twenty six budget.
I was going to ask you about that, thank you.
Sure.
Last time I had the head around, okay.
I repeat, we both.
Discussion always confused me. All right, so why don't we keep it in, we'll just, uh, we'll fix that, but everything else is the same. It's good with that, okay? So we'll keep it in the vote. Just because you want to get that done. Okay. Um, I think from here we can, uh, ends our business crying discussion. Do they have any comments on that first of all? Is everyone okay with the? Uh, sorry.
Sean? I have just a question for Teresa. We met today to talk about, um, I think for next year, one of the things that we talked about were the two technology positions that are down here in the world point from bottom. And Teresa was going to try to come up with a cost for those positions and I'm just wondering if we have to have to read that.
I didn't this afternoon.
Okay, and that was one of the, that was the third final points with the two, with the, the two, um, um, group but building things and then that was our third point over. And we want to make sure we got a good handle on as we were moving through budget statements. So I don't think we need that for tonight anyways, that's just one of the items that we want to keep an eye on. I'm sure at our next meeting, we will facility side, if we can keep the twenty three, twenty four numbers if you'd like. I hope it's a good year. I don't know the dates anymore. Damn, a lot of work to go figure out which year that was. Okay. I think that's what Neil will try to. All right, a business for an action.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was a little late. Um, not to throw a wrench in this, and I'm fine with all of this, except for at the S A U budget meeting, we'll talk about the social worker position. And the fact that, um, the social work position was seemed, um, not more important, but more essential or more urgent at the Ray School and the Marion Cross School. And not necessarily at R M S and the high school. And I don't know whether that is true or not, and that's not, I don't feel that that's a board decision. That's something that you guys need to decide, but that is the information that was shared in the S A U budget meeting. That is the information that was shared in the S A U budget meeting, and I just, I would add that as another bullet point to talk about. Um, during the budgeting process here. It may be that we decide we can't do it this year. I, I'm not, I'm not landing one way or the other. I just feel that um, we've been pushing that can down the road for a couple of years now and. I'd like to see it discussed. Even if it's just, you know, we have to wait another. Year, two years, three, you know, whatever it is, so. And if it's not true that it's more important at these elementary schools, then that conversation should be held, had as well. So, thanks.
But to clarify, were you talking about it in the S A U budget committee meeting as a possible addition to the S A U budget?
Yes, um, because like Rhett's position, so the conversation we had at the S A U budget meeting. Was would the social worker be considered something like Rhett? And the special education position as a coordinator at the S A U level that then got divided amongst the four schools. And the information that we received during that conversation, and I wish Michael were here to see chairs that committee. Um, was that. Probably can't do it this year at an S A U level, that it might be too expensive, but per, and that it didn't seem like something that would be used by all four schools. Immediately, but maybe if we started at the elementary school and it was. It was seen as something that was useful, it could then go throughout. So I just, again, the, the S A U budget committee decided. Not to add it to the S A U budget, and it felt as if it was a discussion that should probably happen at. The Hanover, the Norwich and the, and even the Dresden. Level, um, because again, it's part of the strategic plan. It is something that we said that we wanted to do. Five years ago or whenever that process started, and it has not yet happened, so.
Well, thank you. That I think from a budget career perspective, we, you know, relying on Sean and Greg for more input on that. We get a full budget meeting as far as, because that's going to just be enough to eat at that point, right? If it's not district wise.
Yeah.
Good.
That is just a, a procedure question. Um, I don't know when feedback from. People outside of the school board is helpful for planning the budget. So can you tell me when that should happen? If we have like concerns about certain areas or. Yeah, when is it that it's helpful for you to get perspective from, say, teachers? In the school?
I mean, so I would say it's. I mean, the budget calendar is rapidly moving on here, so I think, and again, that calendar is in the, I think it's in the dread. It was approved at the Dresden. Maybe I can send it to you, but I would say as far as any of those. Meetings, they're publicly worn. Definitely people should show up from the public. I think you're talking about the public, you're talking about teachers.
I'm talking, well, I think teachers are part of the public too.
Yeah, so from a public standpoint, I would encourage people to come to any of those meetings.
Any budget meeting.
Any of the budget.
So specifically to a budget meeting as opposed to this context?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, if there's specific things that can't be there, I would say I'm the chair of the Norwich Budget Committee, so, you know, send me a note. Garrett, yeah, and then, but I would say as far as those meetings go, well, I mean, are the, the internal ones are publicly more to the old ones?
No, no.
So it's more going to be just the, so we have like the one that's at the end of October is the first kind of. So we've had the initial meeting where we did the budget guidelines, and then we've got basically up to three more budget meetings. And then I would say also like. Listen, I, I mean, I meant my answer a little bit. So then we, actually, as we get into the end of the budget season, on the school board agendas. We start having notice the budgets, right? So if someone wants to come to that meeting, this meeting, at the, towards the end of the.
Right.
Direction discussion, the budget.
Yeah, to clear in the process, it's more helpful, because it feels like more helpful on the front.
And I would say during the. Right, so I would say, for example, the big one, you know, so for example, I mean, and again, unfortunately it's going to change slightly because Neil's at the, yes. You, during our, when this one's scheduled, but um, on that calendar, it is. Supposed to be October twenty-ninth, so it'll probably be that last week of October. Maybe that first week of November, depending on the schedule. Well, I said, and then the second one is November twentieth, so right before the Thanksgiving holiday. So I would say that either one of those.
Okay.
Is, and then, because then, then we're really kind of starting to get into. You know, okay, what do we get from here?
I think, I think also we had our internal meeting today for Norwich and. We asked Sean to go back to, well, we talked about going back and gathering information from staff members at this point. To for the next two weeks, give feedback to the budget, right?
So the way it works is, right, just we were talking internal, external, so we had our first budget meeting where we did the budget guidelines. And then this week, the week of, the, there was today, Wednesday, October first. We call it the internal, which is basically the administration with the principals who are creating the budget. And then there's going to be another one of those on October twenty-third, and then we have our public budget meeting with the budget committee. And Sean's at those as well. Um, but now it's actually, it's a public meeting, a little bit more meeting. And then there's a second one of those, and then, like I said, then the, then the budget will start being added to the. School board agendas as well, so the whole board can start looking at them.
Okay.
Before we go for, you know, voting on it into June.
June, yeah, I just want to, I can't, I just want to add, I want to make sure that we're um. They were working with the process here, right? So I do think if, if, if these are ideas, concerns that are coming from teaching staff, then it really wants to be bundled through your principal. If these are ideas coming from members of the Norwich public that they want to share with the board, then yes, a budget committee meeting or a regular board meeting would be the right thing for that, but. Um, for somebody that has both hats, if you're wearing your teacher hat, I really would encourage you to flow those discussions through. Your principal and your superintendent rather than. If before or uh, if you're going to bring them to the board, I really would want you to have those conversations with Sean first. Before you came to the board. I think it's just, it would work much better than that.
And sorry for, yeah, that's why I was asking you if this is public teacher, so.
I mean, I can't take off my teacher hat when I think about, like, because I have inside knowledge. That I wouldn't have if I was just a parent.
I think put your hat on and smart, like, okay, my taxpayer in Norwich, or my teacher, if this is something to do with the inside of the school. As Neil said, I mean, if this is the chair of the board, like, we really rely on the administration to tell us what they need, and then obviously we kind of. At that point, given the budget situations and the tax rates are kind of saying. You know. What you think can handle.
Thank you for walking me through that. I appreciate that.
But again, that's why, if it's a teacher thing, get to Sean earlier, because again, they're having these internal meetings, right? So that's why they're putting the budget, then they present at our budget meeting. Okay. That's it there. Okay, so um, back to where we were, we can. Do I have an approval? So it's our updated, so we have B through E, and then we'll have Michael do his V S B A resolution. Do we have a motion for consent items A through E?
I move to grant items B, C, D, and E by consent.
Right, B through, so I can, by Lisa, all is in favor. Michael, you not like the rap?
I'm just trying to prefer.
He's starting thinking of his next time.
So that's approved by unanimously. Uh, now we have for item F, our V S B A resolutions. Do I have a motion for that?
I move that our delegates to the V S B A meeting take a position of pass on resolutions one and five. And for all the resolutions, everybody delegate shall not take a position adverse or potentially adverse to the interest of the interstate school districts.
Give a second, Lisa, all those in favor? Alright, thank you very much, and thank you, Neil. Alright, uh, we'll move on to our communications report, report the chair. I'll keep mine short. Um. The one thing I think that I've been keeping an eye on, I have not heard anything back from the select board. Unfortunately, I did not have time. I think they've, they've had some meetings. Um, I have not had time to view those meetings or see if they had had any more movement on the Norwich Finance Committee. Uh, but what I will do um, is let Steve Hepburn, who is the chair of that committee, at least reach out and make sure that he's aware of. The public meeting that we'll be having, again, it's currently scheduled for the twenty-ninth of October, and it will be moved at some uh, soon. Uh, but at least we'll let them know what they're, we're having, what they're having those means at, you know, at this point. Hopefully they will get some direction from the select board as far as what we've put forward to them, as far as the existing M L U and the existing charge. Um, but I'm not sure what, what has got, what has transpired on that side, but at least trying to keep things moving along. Um. And yeah, that's it. I think obviously it's dark out already, so it's all been moving on, and I think the schools are going, everything's. They're getting into the school year here, so I think it's definitely a, an exciting time. Okay, on to um, principals report, Sean.
I submitted writing report, I hit a couple of highlights and then taken out questions. Uh, we've remained in. We're up one to three hundred and twenty-six. This one. I put some highlights in about some learning that's going on in the building. Um, I think to note that the floor seems to have taken an increase in interest this year. Many more classes have been out there. Special thanks to Tony who came to borrow my B suit the other day to go out there and, and collect some brown wasps. Not honey, you don't honeybee, brown wasps that are not very nice out there, trying to. I did not in this report, wanted to say that we are fully staffed. We hired the last two positions. Uh, we just started on Monday, but it's nice to have a fully functioning staffs. We are getting close to having our first school celebration for P I S system. On the way out, the P L Char is getting close. It'd be a lot of fun, and when we announce it, you're welcome to come and take part in any activities. We are working as a community of. For getting kids here to school on time. So I'm just going to include every report and I'm including the parents and the whose wise words, just our attendance data. And doing very good this year. We dropped a little bit to ninety-seven percent present throughout the week or last week. Two point seven percent party. Which compared to the end of last year has been really fantastic. Makes a huge difference, especially with our third school goal of having community meetings and building climate and. Getting kids comfortable in school, super important for them to come on time and be here. When school's in session. The other thing we're trying to discourage this year is we have a lot of families that take vacations during the school year. Maybe gone for a week, or a week and a half. And just trying to give some education that that's something that can't be made up. What happens in an elementary school. Can't be replicated with a workbook or assignment that goes with kids on a vacation that really has to happen in classrooms. So we're just trying some further communication, and so far we've got much better attendance than we had. And I just included in here a couple of considerations we're thinking about uh, next year's budget. One being the, a second building substitute, when we're thinking about the data that we share. Sometimes happens that we have one building substitute, Mr. Fry, who's a mailing, and he's busy every day. And he is greater and we cover. Most of classroom positions, but what often happens is that there's a support person we thought here, a special educator or interventionist. Um, an education assistant, those positions go unfilled. And I think what we're seeing is some of our media students aren't getting the services that they require to be able to grow. Because we don't have the staff to provide that on any given day. So my uh, recommendation is that I look at budgeting and think about how we can put that second building substitute and be able to fill some of those positions throughout. Weeks as well. And then I put again the, the technology and the rest of our position that. They're going to be required of us to be able to be in the bed rating model. And the shared just a few important dates in case you might want to come to any of them. Do you think any questions?
I didn't have the report.
They linked the data presentation.
Yes.
I'm sure we all appreciated that you just, I mean, it's a great.
Yes, it was great. And it is nice to have the data review report there, so, yeah.
The only question I have about your report is probably more appropriate for. Or Robin, just trying to wrap my head around like. When did we go to the federated model? What was our assumptions in making? That it's kind of like, we're starting from the presumption we're under-resourced. Is that true? You know what I mean? And like really pushing on that from a budget. Which is probably more appropriate during budget.
Yeah.
Discussion, but just while, um, hearing that, like, anytime there's a budget ask, I always try to like, hey. Were we budgeting around something? And I can get other ways to do this, particularly because.
Yeah.
We have budget challenges um. In the other school district boards that we serve on, there are some immediate financial challenges.
Yeah.
I just wanted to take a part of before having a presumption that.
Right.
They're going to have resources right away.
And I think Bryant presented federation model last year, maybe toward the end of the school year.
Yeah.
It's something that.
I'm sure I was captivated.
Yeah. It was something he'd been working on with Jay, and it was really. Incorporating more technology, and this was something that Josh had been working on doing too, is aligning more technology within the S A U. Office to send out to the schools, because it's been so decentralized. And so that really has been the plan, but I could also bring some of that information back.
So just, now, whenever the appropriate time, just signaling at the point that we talked about that. I guess, and part of it probably is from my day job in healthcare, everybody goes, we should share resources.
Yes.
And then someone tries to share resource, no, 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 you should share.
Well, and technology has changed too, I think, right? And so there are greater needs in different areas, like. The registrar now is responsible for inputting so much important data that has an impact on. Scheduling testing and, you know, for I R E T, for E C A. So if any of that data is incorrect, then it has a major impact on.
Library.
The library system. Um, so, and we have more stable reports that have to be done against audit data collection, so. Yeah, so it's very different. The jobs have become very different over time.
You don't know how quickly Sean just loaded these principles report, and I think we need a technical person here.
I do need to mention one thing, that uh, we had a grant that came in that doesn't need to be approved by the board because of the flow of the threshold, but I do want to. Uh, give thanks to the generosity of the friends of Hiller Manor Schools. Our artist, Hay Six, will be getting a new tutorial on printmaking. Um, that will assist this Ethan. Teaching about negative and positive spaces from color theory. This received a generous grant. Thank you, good luck.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions for Sean?
Alright, I, while we play hockey and we miss school sometimes, full disclosure. Um, I, I work in healthcare and have pediatric practice at Kipper. Um, that really pushes hard on everyday accounts. And eliminating the effects of absenteeism and the benefits of showing up and being there, and so I applaud your efforts and focusing on that.
Alright, Robin, on to you.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk about a few things. Um, one of the things that I've scheduled throughout the year with the leadership team are strategic planning meetings. We had our first two weeks ago, and we focused on the capital improvement plan and taking that information. As the first step that we were talking about before to go through the TruX Collins information. Each of the um, administrative teams at each school looked at their information and tried to really. Look at what they would put as top priorities, sort of medium priorities, and a lot of it was based on the data from the TruX Collins report. But also from personal data or in the schools and seeing the needs and. Additionally, they were looking at some things that hadn't been included in the report that they thought were important as well. So we did this as a precursor to the first official capital improvement plan meeting with the team. But I think it's a great first start, and it's allowing us to move forward with really thinking about what we want to do in the long term. And then in each of these strategic planning meetings, we'll look at the different categories, so. That is sort of my plan for how we'll move the strategic plan forward over the course of the year. Um, which is really very closely tied to the capital improvement plan also. I have been talking about trying to be in the schools frequently, and so I'm continuing to be here. I have been talking about trying to be in the schools frequently and so I'm continuing to be here a lot as much as I can. And today was my first day of my visits with students, really trying to meet with different student groups. And so this morning at seven forty-five, I was able to meet with the news team, which was. Such a highlight of the day. Um, so that's been really wonderful and the students, of course, provide me with most. Important feedback, you know, how they're enjoying the school year, how much they love their teachers, really everything in school, so. They want pools to be put on the property. Hockey rims like that, but um, no, though, so that's been amazing. And I've talked with you about the changes to the leadership team meetings. We'll have our second one um in two weeks and that one will be held at the middle school. I think our third one will be here at Marion Frost, so I'll get feedback about those and we'll continue to move forward with. A leadership team that is really focusing on. Piece of instructional coaching and looking at classroom practices across the board and all of our students. And I think I mentioned to you at our first that we, I took that data and I shared it with the staff. The feedback that we had gathered as a leadership team, so hopefully I feel like it's a powerful process. That that will continue to help us grow as a team over the course of the year. Happy to answer any other questions. Oh, and I just wanted to mention that I was looking into the federal shutdown. That occurred, as you all know, midnight. And it looks like that will not have an impact on any of our funding that we receive in schools. Most of that has already been collected. And even some of the federal title funding that we are supposed to collect today. Has already gone through, so we're at least good for a lot, so.
Any questions for Robin?
I just want to give an appreciation because I know all the things that Robin has on her plates. And I appreciate that you prioritize kids in schools and show up here and. And do tours and watch for classes and. Just makes. The whole school better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Lauren.
Alright, so uh I feel like the months of August and September, we're learning about sort of the broad strokes. Of what happens here across all of the four schools and my focus was really around the buckets that you see reported on in my report this evening around grant work. Um, curriculum work and our E L A committee, as well as organizing our K twelve meetings. Um, doing some safety planning, but then also really trying to prioritize visibility among the schools as well. Um, and it feels like this month is probably gonna be marked with some more of the nitty gritty, so some of the finer. Micro pieces of what's happening in our district, um. Building on what Robin is doing with our leadership team, uh being able to see across the schools, being present in those schools. Where those real strengths are showing up and where we have some opportunities for exploration and potential growth. Then I could hopefully help um provide some action planning around and just working with the folks that make the district as special and wonderful as it is. To just keep us moving on that path forward. So I'm starting to see that, you know, the connections between the schools, the. Alignment and opportunities for alignment um vertically and horizontally. Uh, and it's making for some really exciting work ahead. Um, lots of learning, lots of learning. And that's been uh both a challenge, but also just something that's really reinvigorating. Um, and I've appreciated the support from all of the school leaders. Robin's support, the warm welcome at the S A U and then just being welcomed into so many classrooms in this district. So I'm happy to uh answer any questions about what I provided in my report, but just keep it on.
Uh, just just one comment, um. In larger record reflective, it's like to refer first to ask a question on that. Or just actually I'll frame it and comment as you go up the speed. I would just um urge people to think about. Hey, how like our kids in Norwich get to the middle school at a different time? I've learned that people in the Upper Valley love the outdoors. They love King Arthur and they love to gossip about this and that. And so really, did you know that the race pool talks about what you have to get to advance own goods? So it's just like in a broader point of way, hey, hopefully you're in your job for a long time and really successful. That on-ramp of getting there in seven, like people get really sensitive about what happens. So I just think that might be a focus of emphasis at some point in your journey and your.
Absolutely. It's actually one of those opportunities I've already alluded to.
Alright, any other questions? After the business administration report, Teresa.
Um, so I've uploaded my financial report for the first quarter of the year. Not much really to. Anything much going on in that respect. Um, at this given time, we still have an un-audited um fund balance assumption of three. About three hundred thousand dollars. Um, given that and everything else, um. Again, as far as we're moving forward with the changes in the office, the transitions. Um, spent all day Monday working with the new assistant B A, um getting her on track where she needs to. Be taking over the lot of the tasks that I've included prior or anything else. Um, so that's been going well and everything else. And. Um, the bigger thing is having more meetings. Um, between budget meetings that we started kicking off, we had the one in Norwich and hand over today. Um, so we'll again convene and come back together in more meetings and. What we've come up with figures and. Meeting with Tony and Matt regarding facilities and C I P, you know, you've heard already from Tony today. On that, um, that's a big, big thing getting the C I P committee going. And being able to take the data that's been given us, because even like the figures that are in the data, the dollar amounts, they're they're already outdated. So although some of the recommendations that are in there, um, we need to make sure that uh. That what we're looking at now is still. Still on target or still need to be on radar. But we'll be dragging that out. And uh, basically food service seem to be going okay, nothing exciting. I mean, it's been going well, we have some knowledge. Um, but and then transportation. Um, I asked Sean because we still had questions on the. Arrival time of the buses and the pickup at the end of the day, so I. We had talked about kind of maybe doing writing down the times because without something substantial like that. Kind of hard to go back and say, hey, your buses aren't showing up. You know, so how do things on the radar to do that? That's pretty much.
I probably missed this. Is the fund balance? I mean, we expected to be that number or is that unexpected? Like, is that a?
No, we it, well, we anticipated that we would have about three hundred at the end of the school year, so that was built into the budget. So and right now, obviously the ongoing, so we do not have.
Any other questions for Teresa? Alright, if there are none. And we do need for an executive session. You know, we want to do it with a two-step motion.
I think we should try it.
Let me actually list the two things that we're doing as far as. Uh, I mean, they're both related to the contract.
Right, but they also show it because two different.
But we will mention them both, correct? Yeah, yes, okay. I can do it or you want it. I'm chair, so I press you. So the way we're supposed to be doing this is, is it, you know, because we're moving into the first one, which has to do with contracts, labor relations. Arbitration or mediation grievances for. Their confidential client attorney communications, you make two motions in a separate month. So the first motion. Which I can make now is I will move to, uh, we just uh went so quickly here.
I have progressives if those help.
Well, there's, uh, so we'll move into executive session. I will make the move to. Uh, find the premature general public knowledge regarding both the issues of the grievances and the contract negotiations. Would place the board at a substantial disadvantage if it's publicly uh discussed. Uh, so I'd like to make the motion to move into a non-public session to discuss those two items. Do you have any second? Okay, all is in favor. Alright, that's unanimous. And then we'll make a second motion that I moved to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing. The grievances and the teacher uh contracts. Uh, under title one, section three thirteen A one. Do I have a second for that?
Michael?
Carlos in favor? Alright, so we move into executive session.
...
That chair is not fully used.
All right, return to full session at nine ten. As far as event topics for our next meeting, our next meeting is the November fifth, Wednesday. Get me any agenda topics. Who wants you adjourned?
I'm going to adjourn at nine ten and yeah.
Yeah, second. Lisa. We are adjourned.
Let's see, my COVID arm got shot. I gotta get my left arm moving. Oh, thank you. Who seconded us going into non-public? I know Garrett made the motion. Who was the second?
I seconded.
Thank you. That's all I needed.